Welcome everyone tonight to the work session. We need to go ahead and get started. The first items will be budget discussions. We have public works, the police and fire on tap for tonight. So what I'm gonna do is try to break it down into time slots. We recognize the fact that we may not get through everything that you're proposing, but this is just a first go around. And, you know, I had a comment from at least one council member. It may have been you, Councilman Brown. Could've been you, Councilman Conyers. It says that, you know, just because we don't comment necessarily on these first rounds, don't take that as that's an approval of your budget. And also, don't take it as a denial. You know, it may be that we just wanna think about things and get back with you. But, so, just keep that in mind as we go through. And I'm gonna ask you to try to go through it fairly quickly. Public works, we're gonna give you until about 4:30, 4:35. Police, Chief Pettis, if you're gonna present that. We're gonna start yours around 4:35. And then, fire, about 5:05 or 5:10. Fire, we won't give you as long as we give the other departments. Don't think you're quite as big, and I know you're gonna have everything in order. So, we're gonna try to get through that. I don't believe, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, we are not going to have that item number two, insurance broker discussion, tonight. Okay? You can strike that from the work session agenda. And then, we will move right into the grants discussion as soon as we get through these. So, Arthur, Dale, if you wanna start off with your public works budget discussion.
Okay. Jack, I thank you for opportunity to come today.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. I passed out a budget. Gave everyone one. This year, we're looking to increase some personnel on the street department. I wanna add another equipment operator, three. Hopefully, my goal is to have three. Right now, we've got four guys on the street crew. In other words, those four guys take care of all the asphalt. They take care of all the pipe laying, all the things it takes. And, of course, our log, our backlog, we backlog on a lot of our projects. So, I'm hoping to add another street crew. And by adding another equipment operator, three, that's my plan. Also, I wanna add a carpenter, one. I need a, I need a young guy, because we're all getting old. And George Ladd, my crew leader for the Streets and Construction, he said that the construction crew is a geriatric crew. Your average age, your average age of those guys-
Sandor, you're not hearing any of this, right?
The average age of those guys is in their 50s. So, anyway, we need to add a little bit of youth to that crew. So, I wanna try to do that. And, of course, equipment apprentice, part-time seasonal, that's the two seasonal guys. We wanna have two seasonal guys for the summer. And, we've got one right now. I wanna add another one to it. Also, underneath training in school, I'd like to try to go to a public works conference. It's in Orlando this year, if at all possible, to try to get there to go see that. There's a lot of good ideas and things that you can get from the conference. I'd like to go to that. Underneath professional services, I put some engineering services in there. I didn't know, we've got several big projects coming up. And, I'm just kinda projecting that we may be using them. I don't know. But, I would rather have it in there than not have it in there and have to come and ask you for it. So, it would be better to have it. Let's see. General supplies, if you flip over there. General supplies, you see, we've got an increase in that. And, the line item, let me pull up my list of general supplies. General supplies, mainly, it's like cleaning stuff. Anything that we need for jobs comes out of that. Actually, the dog, the little bags that you see on the bay, we've been taking that out of general supplies. We've been taking out all the cleaning materials, all the things it takes to keep everything running. Also, if you look underneath the general maintenance, we didn't have anything underneath general maintenance. I got with Jill. I said, "We need to add that." Because, when I go to repair something, like the parking garage, it's not really, doesn't really come out of street materials and landscaping, but it doesn't come out of the other budgets either. So, you have to, you gotta put it somewhere, and you gotta take the money out of somewhere. So, I think we need a general maintenance. Also, we need to put a budget line item, I mean, put some money in the budget to do floors at the warehouse, the waxing of the floors. That's something that's been getting neglected. We've only done it like once in the last five or six years. So, we'd like to try to do that. A lot of, a lot of general maintenance, and you'll look and see, I've got the line item that we get stuff out of. It's just, and that's basically what it is, general maintenance. So, anyway, we'll try to do that. Moving on to the telephones. Verizon, I talked to Jeff, and he can answer this question a little bit better than I can. He wants to try to use a, put GPS on some of our trucks this year to try out, to see how that works. I think it's a great idea, because we have trucks that goes up and down the streets every single day. And, we run into problems, we can locate them, and that, we know where they're at. Let's see, dues and memberships, equipment and vehicle repair. This one right here, I bumped it up just a little bit. We still have not gotten rid of all our older vehicles. We've still got a lot of older vehicles on the, in the fleet. And, Tim is really doing a great job of trying to get, keep these vehicles running, trying to replace them. And, we're getting there. It's a slow process, but we're getting there. So, I bumped that up just a little bit, just expecting that we have a problem with that. And then, if you flip over to uniforms, we just purchased uniforms this year, so, we bumped that way down. I've just put enough money in there just for new employees. That's it. And, the next, the next biggie, I want you to look at these, starting with the sweeper. We put it in the budget for last year. We really need to look into getting a new sweeper for this year. It's part of our MS4 permitting, and we don't want one of our sweepers going down. We've just gotta keep that going, so we can keep our streets clean. And, the one we've got, it's almost 20 years old. So, it's starting to see its age. We've taken good care of it, but it's just one of those things, it just continues to get more problems. The asphalt box, that's a, actually, a trailer with a hot box on it. I call it a hot box. And, we go over to Mobile, pick up our asphalt. We can use that for two days, three days. It saves a lot of time. Guys, saves a lot of time on going back and forth to Mobile, plus man-hours in doing all this. If you look at the, of course, the roller packer trailer, we've got a small roller packer we tow behind our trucks for packing asphalt. And, we've been borrowing the mechanics, but they're getting a little impatient with us. So, we would like to get our own and put in our fleet. Also, we wanna try to start replacing some, the rest of these trucks, rest of these fleets. And, like I said, I've been working with Tim on trying to do this and identify which trucks need to be, need to go. And, that would be the two, three-quarter ton trucks to replace two construction crew trucks. And, the next line item would be the tool bodies for those trucks. Of course, you have a carpenter goes out, you gotta have a tool body for all the tools. The greenhouse, Paul said he needed another greenhouse. This will be one of those, kinda like a temporary-type greenhouse, because we don't always need a greenhouse, it's covered all the time. And, this would be one of those greenhouses where we put up the framing. We cover it up in the wintertime, have a portable heater, put in there, and then we take it back down in the summer. Also, we wanna continue to replace in the landscape, another three-quarter ton truck for landscape crew. And then, we got two out-front mowers. I know we purchased two this year, but it was recommended we go ahead and try to replace the two other ones that we've got. So, I put that in there this year. I wanna go ahead and get another mosquito truck. It's one of those small Colorado's we have problems with all the time, and I just wanted to kinda forego problems, because mosquitoes, when you start spraying, you gotta have a truck that's reliable. I wanna point out one thing on this water truck chassis. We have not, just because, you know, the way the budget fell this year, we have not purchased it yet, but Tim told me that they were working on it right now. And, I'm not for sure if we're gonna get that in here, but we really gotta have that. So, we're hoping we can order it. It takes six months to get some of these trucks in. You gotta get the chassis, then you gotta get dual steer put on it, and then you get it. So, hopefully, we'll get it before the end of the budget here, I'm hoping. And then, animal control truck, another small truck we gotta replace. And then, of course, the custodian truck, the one that drives around. These are too small, it's too small, are Colorado's that Tim says they've been having, continually having problems with, and we're just trying to phase them out. Track hole rental, I put it in there. I hope I don't ever have to use it. But, that's one of those things, if you don't have it in there, then I have to come and ask, and we have to find out where the money's gonna come from. So, I'd rather think forward and think that, hey, if we have problems, we can get it. And then, here's a, here's a new thing we have in the budget for this year. We were asked to separate flowers out. And, if you look at line item 51-400, that starts off in the spring flowers. That's the total amount of flowers that we buy for the spring. If you look at the summer, that's the total amount of flowers we spend, total amount we spend on flowers for the summer. And then, the fall, and then, of course, we back at the winter. Normally, when the flowers, we have to order these things like a year in advance, almost, to plan it out. And, that's the total amount we spend on our flowers. Point that out to you. And then, of course, street materials and landscaping. I kept it the same, although we did take the flowers out of that line item. We still have to buy pot and soil, we still have to buy trees, we still have to buy the concrete and asphalt and all the things that goes on to keep, keep the streets going. So, that's basically my budget, or my proposed budget. So, if you got any questions?
Questions, Council?
Yeah. Arthur, going back to the vehicle purchases and equipment, you mentioned the water chassis. What else in that 2007, 2017 column has already been approved, just not purchased yet?
On the, in the sanitation, we have several trucks in the sanitation department.
But, is this the only, the water chassis the only thing in public works?
Yeah, the water chassis is the only thing in public works.
And streets, yeah, streets.
We just, actually, we got some half-ton trucks that are on the list tonight for y'all to approve.
I have a couple of questions. One related to the flowers. So, I see the 280 budgeted for the material and landscaping currently for this year, as well as for next year. We're at 298 year-to-date. Right now, were the flowers pulled, for 17 flowers are included in that 280 number?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay.
And that should've been a lot more, I guess, than the 280?
That's what I'm asking, I guess. Okay. So, we're not, if you go back to 16, we're at 460, 15, 408. So, we're really talking about 415, 412 roughly.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's not, not that far off from where we were in 15 and 16. I was just curious, what, do you know what we spent on flowers this year, what we aren't gonna spend?
I do not have that in front of me right now.
And then, I had another question. See, I may've lost that. Someone else go ahead, lost my question.
Arthur, that animal control truck, does it have a cage to put all these geese in?
I don't know if I'm gonna answer that question. I'm waiting for somebody to take care of the geese.
Did you say, "Take care of the geese"?
No.
I thought that's what you said.
That actually reminded me, my other question was, was related to the, to trucks. So, you're trying to replace the existing outdated inventory?
That's correct.
Where does this, the purchases proposed for 2018, about where does that leave us on remaining vehicles needing to be updated and upgraded? I know you're always gonna have some things, but if you're talking about general fleet turnover, it seems like they're-
With this, this is gonna pretty, pretty much put us up-to-date, almost, in our fleet.
Then, why did the maintenance go up, if you, we're gonna have all new vehicles?
Well-
Bring that 20-year-old sweeper.
Y'all hadn't voted on the budget yet.
True.
And that's what you told me.
Anticipation? Good answer.
Are you gonna get the new ones in now?
Yes.
Or not?
Yes.
Yeah, didn't you say it takes, for some of these and for some of the other ones, a year to get them, once we even start the process?
Yeah, the bigger trucks, it does. But, I would say, like I said, I was telling you about the sweeper, that's, that, out of all my pieces of equipment that we take care of, that thing runs every single day, almost, except for on weekends. And, of course, we got parades and storms and everything.
And so, staffing-wise, you're pretty well-staffed. You're only asking for two full-time and one part-time seasonal?
Yes, sir. We're, uh-
Be all pretty decent shape?
We're trying to ramp up. I don't wanna do it all at one time.
Okay.
But, we're getting close.
Okay.
We are gonna get Leslie, she's going to pull, like, organizational charts for, you know, our municipality, to give him, so we can at least look at what others are doing. And, we're gonna do that in its own presentation, because it's, there's a lot to it. So, we can kinda see, if we don't do it in 2018, at least, this is what a city this size, with this budget, looks like.
And if you run across something and you have any questions, please feel free to call me.
Gotta digest all these purchases first. But, you gotta ask, or you won't get it.
Yeah, if I don't ask, I, you know.
That's right. Just, Council, the only thing that jumps out at me is only one thing. You look, going back two years, that's a $1.6 million increase out of 2.3 million. We did, we pumped a lot into public works this past year. We had a, quite a, quite a large increase in what we budgeted. But, we'll have to look at everybody else's requests to see what we can, you know, whether we can afford it all, or whether we have to prioritize. We don't, we don't doubt you have needs, that's for sure. We never doubt that.
All right, everybody got, got a sheet there?
Yes, sir.
And we'll follow right behind. Arthur with streets, with sanitation. And, that's another good review. We'll just go through each section, talking about what we think the needs will be over the next year, and talking about how we're addressing overtime. And, basically, we wanted to do a little project to say, what would it take for us to not get overtime? What would it take for us to even out the services? We've had some problems with stability in, for instance, recycling, not being able to complete the Monday routes. Trash crews are always getting behind because of either mechanical issues or just the sheer weight of volume after storms, having to go out and pick these things up. So, we did a workload analysis for each of the services, and tried to put down some data points to figure out, what are we running today, and what do we think we're gonna be running next year and the next couple of years? And, this is basically a five-year plan. If we can put this plan in place with the personnel and the equipment, we look like we'll have a nice, stable, five-year run. We'll deliver good, stable services and meet the expectations of the residents. That's probably the biggest thing we're not doing right now. If you miss Quail Creek on Monday, you definitely hear about it on Tuesday morning. And, the phone just lights up, and I don't even like to answer it. But, the good news is our guys are tough, they know what they're doing. I can't compliment them enough. Recycling, for instance, has, it's been a five-year grind for them to finally get to this point, where we're getting some, two new trucks ordered this year is fantastic. We just hired a fellow today on Monday to come in and be our fourth driver. Things are looking up across the board. And, we've got our new plan to go to five-day-a-week. These are the things we're doing now, basically, to alleviate this, some of this growth stress. And, I think if we'll look at this plan real quick, it'll take us through the next couple of years and deliver really good results. So, I guess the main thing, just talking about, we'd like to hire one new driver for garbage, one for recycle, and one for trash. And then, we'd like to have a hybrid swing driver, which is a more senior-type fellow that can come in and drive all the trucks. And, what that'll do, right now, we're thin. One guy calls out sick, one guy goes on vacation, we're in the hole. We're down, we're down two or three slots right there. If I've got two or three people out on vacation, medical leave, for instance, the overtime clock, I'm sure the Mayor knows, it just keeps spinning. And, there's not much we can do, because we've gotta deliver that service. We can't come back and mow it later or paint it later. We gotta be there on the ground that day and get it picked up. And, that's pretty much what those guys are doing. Anyway, so, the workload analysis, I put a page on the back, you can review later. People don't realize that, like the garbage drivers, they're picking up over 1,000 cans a night right now. And, I remember, two years ago, I put in a fifth driver, and I went from four trucks to five, and the optimal number is about 850 cans a night. You got, so, that's about 85 to 100 cans an hour they have to pick up for a 10-hour shift when they come in at 1:00 in the morning. Now, that's a lot of cans, and they generate maybe two misses a day. It is unbelievable how good those guys are. But, right now, they're back up to about 1,100, 1,200 cans a night. What that does, it makes them speed up, it makes them zig and zag when they don't really have to, they're just trying to cover the workload. We're already maxing out already, after about two years. So, the plan is, if we can get another driver, another truck on the route, that alleviates that, that stress, get it back down to about 850 cans a night. So, fair hope, over 1,000 cans a night. We're considered a heavy-duty use market, and we have to have the equipment, which we've upgraded to the new freight liners, and thank you guys all for that. And, I think now, if we can just get another route out there, go from five to six, that'll bring it back down to about 800, 900 cans a night, and give those guys a good evening, where they can get out there and get everything picked up, get back to the shop and do maintenance, which is the main part we need, and not cause any stress on the drivers. And, I think you'll see some good, stable service there. So, same thing on recycle, same thing on trash. And then, the swing driver is just a guy we need to fill in. So, that's our request for this coming year, and I think that'll help alleviate the overtime and the issues we're having right now.
Yeah, I wanna point out one thing, though. In 2007, we had 20 employees. Sanitation, 2017, we still have 20 employees. That's a 20% growth rate.
Yep, yep. So, we've been flat across the board on those numbers there. Then, we'll get to the next thing. We'll talk about training, school travel. A lot of people don't realize, for ADM and for our certification, we've gotta have three to four people every year trained for as land, certified landfill operators. They have to be at least two on property, anytime the landfill is open. And, they're the ones that gotta go up there and push the top of the landfill, push out the limb pile, handle all the chemicals, et cetera, et cetera. It's gonna take some training money. Every year, they have to go to a class to get three credit hours every year to maintain their certification. It's usually in Orange Beach, and this year, it was in Point Clear. And, it's, it's roughly about $800 to $900 per person. So, we'll look to add that to the budget. And then, every year, we'd like to go to a local trade show. If it's in New Orleans, it doesn't cost very much. I think next year, it's in Orlando, so we, if we're gonna have some people drive down there, we'd like to send maybe the assistant director and one of the supervisors down there to look at the new technology, and what can we do to improve our services? And, the technology on these trucks is incredible. The older trucks are over 10 years old, and you compare them to the newer trucks, they're night and day. And, 10 years from now, they'll be night and day again. So, we have to try and keep up with the technology and the different service techniques, and look at other cities, and what are they doing, and how are they handling this? Professional services, we didn't need anything there. General supplies is a new line we didn't have before. And, if you can just run through it real quick, like the clear recycle bags we're using, baling wire, we need oil jugs, we need bins for the trucks, the pet pickup bags that go in all the parks, for instance. All those items come out, and we bumped that about $5,000 increase to about $50,000 total for the year. And, basically, that's basically accounting for increased recycle bags, as we increase our recycle portfolio, and the number of residents we're servicing. We have to keep that going up. Same thing for baling wire, truck bins, as we increase our truck fleet. These things are all gonna incrementally increase each year, as we add a number of residents that we have to service.
I guess, same, same question I had for Arthur, when it comes to the vehicles and the fleet replacement.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the numbers going back to 14, 15, 16.
Yep.
We're at 220, 470, 332. Then, we jumped to 656. So, we doubled this year from what we did in 16. And, we're basically gonna look at roughly the same as what we're doing this year. Again, is that upgrading and updating that fleet?
Yeah, I tell you what, let's go right to that fleet number, and I think you'll see exactly what we're doing and what we're trying to do here. Basically, general, one thing I will point out, the equipment and vehicle repairs, which is right there, you can see that is going down. It went down about $5,000, just because of what Mr. Burrell had said earlier. The newer trucks are coming in, and Tim Bung gets kudos, he's done a fantastic job in basically rebuilding these things every couple of years. We have trucks that are over 20 years old, and they've just, you can see the road through the floorboards. And, he keeps them running for us. So, now, what we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to step up, we're gonna have to start replacing these 10, 15, and 20-year-old trucks with modern units, just out of safety and reliability. And, basically, 2017, you can see, we're adding a tractor for the garbage trailer. We're basically adding two new recycle trucks, which is fantastic. We're adding one trash truck, we added a new inmate van, and we're paying our small portion for the fuel system. Next year, in 2018, we're gonna add items like another trash truck, and I need to buy two of those big auto trucks for the garbage squad. And, so, that's where those bills come from. This year, I think we're gonna be able to actually put in our orders for all of our heavy trucks for 2017. We should be able to create POs and document the expense for those this year. But, again, they probably won't be delivered six to eight months out. They're special-order trucks, we have to order them, they're gonna build them and ship them out to us. And then, for next year, if we can get all these things ordered this year, next year, we'll need two auto trucks and one trash truck. And, what that'll do is, that will eliminate all the old, what they call the debris garbage bodies that are over 10 years old. We've already rebuilt them twice, and they can't be rebuilt a third time. And, that'll basically eliminate those out of the fleet and get us right where we need to be.
So, then, in 19, projecting for one more year?
Yep.
We ought to have numbers that are more in line with-
Well, exactly.
Prior years, or will we still be trying to replace last?
Well, what we'd like to do, and Tim Bung articulated this to me several years ago, I didn't quite understand it, you have a five-year replacement plan. And, basically, you run a truck to its useful life, past its warranty, past about two years' worth of just general repairs and maintenance, and then you need to look to sell it and get a good value out of it, and replace it with a new one. And, what'll happen is, after this year's purchases, then 2018's purchases, that'll put us right on line, where every year after that, moving on, we'll order one auto truck, one trash truck, and one recycle truck to hit those five-year windows.
Perfect.
And, it'll be a fixed cost, maintenance will go down, overtime will go down, and I think you'll see a lot of good results.
That's the exact-
And, that's the main thing. We'll have some stability that we haven't had in years, and I think that'll be excellent.
Thank you. Thanks.
And, I think that's about it. I think on the back end, you could say, okay, the big thing people ask me about is tipping fees. The landfill, as you know, every time we pick up, we bring it to our transfer station. Then, we have to pay a weight charge to magnolia springs. That tipping fee is about $30, $31 a ton right now. And, the city has to write a check for about $21,000 to $24,000 a month to pay for these tipping fees. And, I've put a 10-year increase, or 10% increase over the next five years, just to cover the increased households that are coming in. We're doing a good job now. I think we've, we've really worked hard with recycle, with our CND landfill, all the components to go into trying to keep that number steady. And, I think with the new houses coming in, though, we're gonna have to increase that over the next couple of years. So, we're looking at about a 10% increase over the next two to five years. And, that's why we bumped it from 260, 20% would be 286. And, that, again, that's the monthly fees we have to pay to the landfill. And then, I think landfill maintenance, these are just general things. You know, we have gas well vents that have to be maintained, we have to monitor the gas wells and report back to the state, the gas measurements every year. year. Fencing, we have. Transfer station repairs. We also, we have the what's called push and cover the landfill. We have to do it at least four times a year. Usually, you need what's called a trackhoe. That's the big track machine with the big clamshell on the front. It actually can move dirt around and help compact the landfill. We don't have one, so we're looking to rent one. It's going to be about $5,000 for each quarter. And we'll try and do this about once a quarter. We've usually done it twice a year, and it's never been in the budget. So now what we'd like to do is go ahead and formally put it in the budget, put it down for what we need. One week is what we need, instead of renting it for two weeks or a month. And we'll just do it more frequently. And I think that'll give us a lot of stability there and help us meet all the regulations for keeping the landfill in shape.
How does the bulldozer that we're purchasing play into that?
That is going to be an excellent piece of gear, just simply because of its reliability. Bulldozers are like everything else. You can, you can buy a super-heavy-duty one, and you can buy a super-lightweight one. This one's kind of right in the middle, and I think it will do well for keeping all the dirt and all the items pushed out, the limb pile pushed out. The one we have now is, it's gone beyond its normal service range.
But I was asking in regards to the rental trackhoe.
Oh, yeah. The bulldozer is used to push the dirt, and the trackhoe is used to dig it up.
Yep.
We've got dirt stockpiled, and you have to have something to dig it up and load the dump trucks. When the dump trucks are being loaded, they haul up on top of the landfill, they dump it, then they spread it out with a bulldozer.
It's kind of like a combined operation.
Basically, I have to shut down my street crew to do this. So it takes us, last time we done it, it took us like two weeks to cover it.
Takes about 12 people to get that operation done. If we did it a little more frequently, hopefully it'll be a little less intensive on the manpower hours and equipment required. And I think that's it. The last thing to talk about, of course, garbage cans. As you know, every time they open new houses, we have to place new cans there. We just bumped that up just a little bit. Cans cost roughly anywhere from $50 to $55 for us to purchase. And then we, we order about 400 a year right now, which we're putting out a little over one per day. I get batches of 10 or 15 at a time. We go out and deliver them to the new neighborhoods. Freight charges for that delivery, of course. And the big thing, we had to add another $10,000, $9,900 for lid repairs. Actually, the Toder cans we use were under a 10-year warranty, and they just went out of warranty. And so now, instead of getting cases of free lids, we have to pay for them. Unfortunately, they're about $16 a lid. Now, we've got to pay for shipping, and we've got to have them come into the warehouse, and then we've got to go out and fix these cans. It's a, it's a sore point with a lot of folks. They want it fixed right away. So we don't really, really want to run out. We've got a good inventory now, and we're doing a pretty good job. Every probably three to four days a week, we go out and fix these things. So it's, it's another requirement, logistical requirement, that we have to fund for the auto truck pickup program.
Why, is it the auto truck pickup that's breaking these lids? We had mine included, and two neighbors were broken in the same week.
Yep. What it is, the can.
I'm not complaining. I didn't ask for a new lid.
We can get you one.
We'll fix you one. It's easy. Just give me a call. But they just, if the cans turn around backwards, for instance, it'll take the lid right off. And the drivers at 1:00 in the morning, they're, they're trying to check to make sure the cans are correctly aligned. If the thing fatigues over time, 10 years is a lot of, lot of.
I'm thinking they may have just drawn out.
Yeah. It just, it just gets brittle after 10 years, and you can't really expect more. It's a great can system. You can't get a better one. And the lid, something's going to give. I'd rather it be the lid than the can. $16 is better than $50, you know? So I think that's the good answer there.
Questions, counsel? Questions, mayor?
All right, thank you.
I want to give you, we're going to be changing, to try to control a little bit of overtime. We're changing up the recycle route. We're going to start picking up recycle Monday through Friday. We're adding an extra route. The guys are going to be working on Wednesdays instead of being, sort of working Monday and Tuesday, all Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. So we had to change the routes out. So we're going to be handing these out this week to the citizens. Trying to educate everyone, starting at the end of July. It's kind of a FYI.
It's got a letter on the back, too. Yes, ma'am. We'd like to post this. Yep, yep. And basically, the, the concept there is we're just going to shift about 20% of the accounts from our high days, like on Mondays or Tuesdays, where we can't quite finish it up, and shift it over to Wednesday. And what that's going to do is that'll give us a 20% reduction in any given weekday and let us handle it with the three or four trucks we have right now. And hopefully diminish a lot of the overtime. So it's something that's been talked about for years, and we're finally, we'll get to implement it into this month.
So it's the same day you get your leaf and limb debris picked up will be the same day you get your recycle.
Yep. Logistically, it makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Chief?
Good afternoon. an additional dispatcher. We've been talking now, I guess, for a year and a half, two years, about a code enforcement officer. And I just went on and put it in my budget because it didn't make sense to me for two people to be doing this job. And you have to be a law enforcement officer to do the job. And so I have to send my officer out, and y'all have heard this before. And to take care of what needs to be taken care of, we have a lot of people that has these short-term rentals and stuff like that. I had to do that one year. A lot of time out of my schedule to work on that. And so from time to time, code enforcement officer has to do things that an ordinary person can't do. You have to be a law enforcement officer to be a code enforcement officer. Wanted to, I put in last year for a captain's promotion in the budget last year for the 2017 budget. It didn't get through. I put it back in this year. And also put in for dispatcher supervisor. And I didn't put any money in for that. And then for our computer forensic examiner, basically, IT guy, I put in for that last year, and we didn't get that. We put some, it was some extra money in for training and stuff. And we have a person going this year to get that training and to get that done. But he's going next week to get that done. And so that was pretty much for personnel needs that I put in for the police department. I don't know if anyone has any questions before we.
Chief, we didn't fund a code enforcement officer?
Basically, no. Basically, what happened was when we had the, the code enforcement officer, I didn't get it funded for my budget. We, when the budget came out, when y'all first got the budget and we were talking before the new mayor came in, I got up and I said, because Jonathan had put in for a code enforcement officer, and I said, I need that in my budget. And I say, because a person has to be law enforcement to be able to write the citations and do these things. And it don't make sense for two people to have to go to court and two people to do a job that one person can do. And it's not really a full-time job. I've since found out that Kim does other things. So I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm just saying that you have to be a law enforcement officer to do that. And so, and we kind of kicked around, it's other things that this person could do besides just code enforcement, but that would be their primary job. So I took the code enforcement job and our IT job, the paperwork for the recommendation of job description over to Ms. Green and gave it to her so that she can kind of be looking at it and finding out so we can get it on the pay scale and get that done.
I, I thought we put one in there.
No, you, you, I think we put $10,000.
Put in the training.
For training.
I remember the training for the.
For the IT.
IT.
Right.
But I'm going to go back and let the code enforcement officer.
On the very back of that sheet, if we're moving forward. Training, travel, and schools. In 2017, it showed we had 44,500, and we dropped down to, we're looking at 39 this year, five, right at $40,000. So it's a little better than $4,500 be saved on that. And this is, with the training, for a lot of people to understand it, patrol, the state requires 12 hours of CEU for each officer a year. That's mandated. I like for them to get somewhere around 20 or 25 hours because there's a lot of things going on in the world. And one of the things that we're bringing in this year, I'm trying to get them some training, it's fentanyl, this new drug that they, well, it's not new, but a drug that they have out. I don't know if people are aware. We had two deputies a few weeks ago that got caught up with this, and they, it put them in serious danger. And if they hadn't have got to knock in, they would have lost their lives. We had one in, I think it was Chicago. And it's, it's just all around now. And a lot of the bad guys are putting this on their drugs and stuff. And so if the dog go up and sniffed it, if you don't have a knock in, in less than 20 minutes, he's gone. And that's the same thing for a human being. And so it's just, we have to get these hours. I have to have 24 hours a year of training and 20 hours a year. And I, I try to get somewhere between 20 and 30 a year executive hours of training. And so it, it has came down from what we were budgeted last year. Our professional services, last year we was budgeted $8,000 in professional services. And a lot of times, things are not put in the right spot where they need to be and stuff like that. But if you look up under here, our new hires, we have to have physiological exams for them. And so that costs us money, and we have to figure that out. We might not spend that $1,650 that much on, if we're just hiring one person. But if someone else leaves, or somebody retires, and then that means somebody else has to go and, and take the exam, physicals. And we do back, the background checks and all of this stuff. It adds up. And then up under here also, we have our K-9 annual vet fees for our two dogs. We're going to have to replace one of those dogs probably in, sometime in the next year. He's getting up in age, and the vet bills are kind of adding up a little bit. And then we have our random drug and alcohol screenings that you have to take when your number comes up, or if you get in an accident or get hurt or whatever. And the last one on that is the annual chief breakfast. Each chief in Bogom County, basically, they sponsor a breakfast somewhere in town once a year. I don't think it's, I think it, last year, we put in for $700. We didn't use it because everything was, everybody jumped on it before I got a chance to put mine in last year. So we didn't, we didn't host a breakfast last year. But it was, it's roughly around $700 to just some meeting, the chiefs and sheriff and some of the, maybe the, a judge or two or someone to come in. And the council and the mayor's welcome to come to the meetings and stuff. It's just a breakfast we have.
Chief, what's the body transport?
Oh, that's a good question. This is something that I have a little heartburn with, but it's nothing I can do about it right now. Every time we have an unattended death, we go out, we do what we do. The coroner gets called, they send them over to Mobile, we pay $150 for them to go. And I, I really don't have a problem with paying $150 for them to go. But for them to, we have to pay $150 for them to come back. And I, I don't see that. It's going to a funeral home to a service and stuff. And we have talked about this at the chief breakfast, you know, why do we have to incur his costs? And we don't, this is just a rough number on this because we don't know how many unattended deaths, you know, that we might have.
So this is a county expense that they're passing on to?
Well, I, I really don't know if it's a county expense. Basically, it's, it's a service they have set up. And it's a guy, he comes out, he has the van, the coroner calls and tell them, we need you to pick up one. And he'll come to the scene and pick them up. And this is something that's been going on for years. We've been paying for, for years. And we've been kind of kicking it around and talking about it. You know, why do we have to pay for this? It looks like, you know, if, if you die at the hospital, they'll go to the hospital, the funeral home will go to the hospital and pick you up and take you back to the funeral home. You know, if you die in Mobile at the hospital, they'll go over there and get you. So USA is right there by where they get taken, where you can't drive over there and get them. That's my question.
So what does unattended mean? If you're in your home alone, or what does that mean?
Right. It's, it's in your home alone. Sometime, we have accidents, a bad wreck on the road or something, and it's some questions there. The coroner makes the call whether they're going to be transported over to the office over there.
What happens if you didn't pay? Body stays over there?
Oh, no. They, they do that. You get a bill once a month. You, you, you get the bill. And so the question I guess you ask is, yeah, I didn't pay last month's bill, what'd they do then?
Yeah.
I don't know. I hadn't, I hadn't got to that point. Computer expenses. It jumped way up. We have leads online. Basically, what that does is we're connected to a lot of the, where people go to the pawn shop and sell jewelry and stuff like that. And they send us a sheet, and they give us a description and everything. And then we can go online and put in if we're missing something. And then we can find it. If we find it on there, then we make a phone call and get it. Southern software, that's, that's a usually thing that we have, our camera support, the IT maintenance, Munis Cloud, excuse me, service support. We put in, well, we got this virus remote renewal. And then we put in for new dispatch computer, $4,600. And then the Microsoft Lens, Corona Support, Firewall, Case Guard Video for the in-car cameras, laptops for the CAD and RMS. And it's just more renewals and a fingerprint ID software. That's something new and a new computer for corrections.
Chief, I was going to ask Jill. This has got to be going somewhere else now. We, we didn't, those expensive didn't go up from 15 to 88, right? Surely, these were just being put in another department or another charge number or something.
They were all the computer was being charged to general in the past.
Okay. And then are we going to see this maybe in other department budget discussions? Kind of like the, the healthcare and all has now been just kind of put under the department as, and, and so it looks like a large increase when it's really just more appropriating it to the department that's using it. Is that right?
Exactly.
Okay.
All right. Moving on, if no more questions on that. Office supplies, all of this is kind of self-explanatory. All right, moving on, if no more questions on that, office supplies, um, all of this is kind of self-explanatory. Uh, we have some, um, admin offices, uh, replaced some chairs and stuff and that's two thousand dollars. And, um, and a dispatch chair, so I think that that's what really bumped us up. We were at sixteen last year and we're going up to twenty-two, um, and I think that's where the big, uh, jump is on that.
Just notice on that, y'all have only spent two thousand dollars year to date out of that sixteen.
Well, they haven't ordered the paper clips yet.
Well, we, we've been, really what we've been trying to do is not get caught with our cars and our cameras, what we have coming up tonight, we've been trying to get the big ticket out of it. I'd rather, you know, come up short somewhere else.
Yeah, please put something else in that line with file folders, paper clips, labels, DVDs, and pins.
Lot of pins, right?
Yeah.
And, um.
I got all you guys carrying around Mont blocks with you when you writing them tickets?
No. They, they getting ready to do away with the pins. Uh, posters, that's just, uh, our mailing, we do a lot of, uh, have the UPS, a lot of stuff and then general mailing. And on general supplies, um, it took a big, big jump and I think it, it's some things that's been re-categorized in here. Um, we, and we got like the copy at least, uh, you know, I don't know, I guess it should be in here, I don't know. Cop, when you get down there about seven from the bottom, copy at least, the, the copy machine at least. And, um, it's over here, um, and what we've been trying to do, and I'm, I'm just skipping, um, the beanbag guns. We've been trying to get some le, less lethal, uh, things in our, in our policy, it says that we would have at least two less lethal, uh, things on our gun belt besides, you know, along with our gun. And so we've been trying to get s- some less lethal things, we, we just purchased, uh, out of this past budget, we just got it in this morning, we were talking about it, uh, the pepper spray. Um, because when you get combative people, you know, a lot of times you have to go hands-on with them. And if you've got something less lethal, you don't have to put your hands on them, we have, uh, our tasers and, um, and so.
You have to shoot each other with the beanbag guns?
No, you don't have to do that and, and we, we talked about it this morning, we all then had the pepper spray, so we don't have to do that. I think, I don't know which one the worst, the taser or the pepper spray.
I heard the stories about the tasers.
Oh, yeah. Uh, and general maintenance on our building, it, that's something that, uh, really hadn't. Hadn't, we hadn't had a lot done. I got a bill, I was out, um, Thursday and Friday and Lieutenant Sledge, um, had talked with Lance and he bought him, it's not on here, it's, it's a bid for the doors. We're having rust at the bottom of the doors, going into the jail, all of the doors round back. And he bought him, um, a bill that someone that came in and gave, gave a bid of forty-four five, I think, uh, for replacing some of the doors and the, um, they got to replace the whole frames and stuff. And so I told him that we, we're gonna have to look at that later on and we're gonna have to have three or four bids, we're gonna have to put it out the bids to get those. But one of the things, like I said, is our floors and the only thing that we ever done, I think it was about a year and a half ago, we did, um, dispatch floors and, and did that. And so we have a lot of maintenance outside of the building, we need painting, we need painting done inside and it's quite a bit of stuff need to be done. And that brings us to the telephones. The phone system and some of this is stuff that wasn't, and this is, um, that we didn't really deal with, this was, I think, taken out of the general before. And, uh, and so. Last year, we were, we were, uh, budgeted two thousand dollars and I explained that, uh, at the last council meeting, I think, uh, about the telephone. And now we're paying our own way, so. And then we go down to dues, memberships and subscriptions. Um, the Chiefs Association dues is two hundred and fifty dollars, um, our OCIC dues, three hundred. Nota renewals for our notarists because they have to, we have four or five notarists at the police department because they have to notarize paperwork on DUIs and other things. And, um, polygraph membership and insurance and APCO membership. And so that's two thousand and six dollars.
Before we get too far down that list, I want to ask, why do we have roughly the same amount, we have Verizon, AT&T, and Southern Link? We have, you know, I understand the Southern Link and, and maybe an AT&T or a Verizon, but why? Why Verizon and AT&T?
I think Jeff would have to answer that. It, it, I know one, one, what it could be, but I think Jeff is gonna have to answer that. We, we had, um, the investigators have phones and me and the three lieutenants have, and that might be, we might be on two systems, I don't know.
Part of it is the, um, fiber and then we have internet, uh, one is for radio, oh, there you are.
Okay, uh, Verizon is for the, uh, devices that go into the patrol vehicles to give them internet access back to the main system. And, boy, about six of your officers have cell phones, I think the investigators.
Investigators, that'd be, no, that'd be eight, I think we got eight.
Um, internet that goes to, uh, Southern Light right now, um, provides, it's just their share of the internet access for the city. Uh, AT&T, that's for our landlines, uh, provides, uh, calling from their desktop phones or, um, for.
That's landlines, is that?
Yeah, yeah, long distance. And then, uh, the Southern Link is for their, their backup radios.
Yeah, the landline kind of answers that.
Yeah, that's just their portion of.
In my mind, I'm thinking wireless everything.
No, no.
And that phone system support, is that for the, is that the Motorola system support?
No, that's actually for the, uh, dispatch has our own phone system, keeps it, uh, separate from our main phone system, and that's just to support that dispatch phone system.
That's not the Motorola system?
Uh, that'd be the, um, second line from the bottom, the PD dispatch console support.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Jill.
Vehicle repairs. And equipment. And see, we have the guns and tasers in here, radio and in-car camera repair, annual radar recertification, fire extinguisher recertification, mechanic shop, stock tires and stuff. And general repair. And, uh, I think it's some. I, I, I guess the guns and tasers is thrown in here up under, just because it's equipment and repair. But it pushed it up from last year. And we're on uniforms and, uh, last year we were allowed at twenty thousand and we, uh, everything kind of moved up a little bit. So it went up three thousand and a hundred dollars on that.
Chief, give me an idea, what does a uniform for you, for instance, cost?
Um, roughly, um, when we, this three hundred and twenty-five dollars will get me three uniforms, three shirts, three pair of pants. And so basically, I hadn't bought any yet, I'm gonna put in to get mine off of two thousand seventeen and then I'll buy two more because I wear a uniform just about every day. But basically the way it's figured, on shift, they work, um, they work Monday and Tuesday, they off Wednesday and Thursday and then they'll come back Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So they'll have three uniforms. Uh, that's not counting, you see some of the officers with the tan pants on and the summer uniform on. So a lot of them do like I do, they buy, you know, their own. All right, uh, purchase of equipment. Uh, it came down, um, about forty-two, like forty-two thousand. Um, on that.
Got a question on that, on the, on the equipment budget, right now we've spent two hundred thousand, year to date, there's still two hundred and fifty thousand left to spend for this year. Is that going to be, uh, vehicles and things that are gonna be ordered this year or is that gonna shift over to this two thousand eighteen?
The vehicles are already ordered, uh, tonight.
We don't pay for them until they come in?
Uh, tonight, no, we, we, once they come in and I, I expect them, then we will get them taken care of. Uh, we, uh, the equipment, it's a lot of equipment going, go in and then you have to paint them because they can come solid black or you can get them solid white. And we always get them solid black and then get the white painted in. Uh, what we used to do, um, we used to do them ourselves and, uh, that changed. Uh, we have the capability of if you get a solid black car or so, whatever color, we have the machine and we could just buy the roll and we can do it. But that costs money from changing for what you got now to go into this new thing. A lot of people come in, chiefs, and they wanna change, they want their own look, and it is the cost. But, um, we do, we do, I think we have, um, we have, um, some of that money you're asking about, uh, it's on the budget. It's on, it, it's gonna come up tonight for the cameras and stuff, I think about a hundred and forty.
Gotcha.
It's gonna come up tonight. Uh, NCIC data and system, um, it dropped, um, it was budgeted for twenty and it went down to sixteen eight, sixteen six eighty. And the jail, it shows an increase, um, here, right at forty thousand dollars. I don't think that, uh, the mills is the big thing you have to kind of look at, um, and then supplies and razors and stuff like that. But I think that with, the way everything's going, and I can't really discuss that, but the way everything's going, that, um, this is probably gonna run pretty close to the same. Maybe another five, another, might end up being ninety-five at the end of the year. The jail locks and fire alarm contract and, and general maintenance is, is gonna probably stay the same. But some of these, these top three, um, probably it's gonna drop off considerably and keep it close to where we were last year.
Questions, counsel? Questions, mayor?
The resource officers, we're gonna get a, um, comp study done on those. And I guess if there's current officers that want that position, would we need to fill their current positions?
Um, well, if we, if, if, if we hired a code enforcement officer and it's someone that wants that, when it, when you do your comp study, they pay, they cannot take, they pay. If they're making thirty dollars an hour and this says from twenty to twenty-five, I think they're gonna be satisfied staying where they at. They, they won't wanna go over there. And, and, but it, you know, we, we would still hire the person and, and if, if they wanted to move over, we still hire the person.
And that's in two thousand seventeen.
They could be off, officer. It, it basically, they, they will, there'll be a police officer still and we could use them a lot on special events, uh, and a lot of stuff that we have going on in the daytime.
Any questions at all?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a question for chief or Jill, you know, looking through the seventeen budget numbers versus the eighteen projections, just the difference of those numbers, I come up with about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar difference. As opposed to the, you know, roughly a hundred and sixty thousand at the end. The police department on that last page has seventeen budget at six million, thirty-eight, and then the eighteen budget, six million, two oh four. If you go through and take the, the differences of each category, or am I off somewhere? I mean, just look, the salaries went up a hundred and twenty-seven thousand by themselves and there's only, uh, training school were down fifteen.
Computer went up.
The only other deducts are, uh, forty-two vehicles and equipment.
Are you looking at that, right at the front page, uh, fifty-two fifteen, um, insurance is going down ten forty, from a million forty-five to seven eighty-seven, did you?
I was just looking at the total number on top for salaries.
I think it's probably a three hundred thousand in insurance.
Difference for every number.
Just about.
It's picking up every single sale, so I'm not, I'm not sure, like Jay said, you know, in the medical insurance, you've got it decreasing and salaries is going up, but. You've got a, a pretty significant change in medical insurance from one million to seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Okay, well, if you ju, if you take the, take the salaries and the medical and everything out. I could be looking at something wrong.
Yeah, and Jill, if you would, uh, out of fairness to, to actually, to all of these departments, if there's been money that was previously appropriated to general fund, just generic general fund and it's now being moved over into the police department's budget, it'll certainly help us. Because if you look back just two years, there's a fifty-three point four percent increase.
Yeah, but this is, uh.
But that's not really the full story because. Yeah, notes like that'll be really helpful because, uh, you know, the, the computers, um, it's the computer expense and there were a couple of other things that are, and I think rightfully appropriated in the proper departments that were just, you know, going to, like you said, general fund, some utility or something like that, some catch-all. It doesn't look so bad. Although I, I will have to admit, counsel, that.
If you look at the.
Two point two million dollar increase, I don't know if all that's made up somewhere by just re-appropriating, but that's a.
Well, if you take the, uh, if you take the eight hundred out of insurance.
Oh, that's right.
And then you go back to not, not this third column from the left or the fourth column from the left, because this one's a year to date. So you gotta go back to that four point seven, take out the eight.
What page are you on there?
I'm on the bottom page.
Last page now, right?
Oh, you're on the last page.
Yeah, so six point two budgeted item, uh, you gotta deduct eight hundred thousand because of the insurance being added in, that makes it five point four. And then you compare that to the four point seven number, because that's two thousand sixteen, the four point oh eight is two thousand seventeen year to date so far.
I think there's a lot also in general supplies.
Right, I think it's not that.
That's what she's gonna pull to.
Any, any of those numbers, and that's work, I know, but.
He thinks that some of that was in capital before.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna go back and look at those.
It's work, but now that you, you know, we're a little bit ahead of it this year, I think it'd be real helpful to, to show that.
I'm gonna go back and check that.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions? Chief, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Okay. Fire?
How y'all doing?
Good evening.
Morning.
Evening.
A little ahead of myself, aren't I?
You never know.
Trying to wake up.
Appreciate the mo, uh, time to discuss our budget, and, uh, I'd just like to start off by saying that, uh, for fiscal year two, twenty seventeen, uh, through the end of June, the fire department has run seven hundred and seventy-two calls for service. That's a hundred and thirty over the, over last year during the same period, uh, which is, I believe, about twenty percent busier. John, go ahead.
All right, uh, the first thing on the list is, um, training. Lost my place. Oh, that's because I'm on the backside, okay. All right, I'm with you now. All right, um, in order, in order for me to maintain my certification as emergency manager, I must maintain at least fifty hours a year, um, in training. So I have the hurricane conference on there, and I have other training at, at a thousand dollars each. There's, there's some specific training that I may attend this year, not exactly for sure which ones. Uh, there's stipend classes put on by FEMA, they're very reasonable, they ain't cost, they don't cost the city very much money at all. They pay airfare, accommodations, um, basically all the city has to do is feed me. Uh, so that's what the other thousand dollars are, and that's why it says other training, because I don't know exactly which ones I'm gonna attend yet, but the hurricane conference alone won't be enough to cover my CEUs for the year. Fireman's physicals, we've always had two thousand in there for fireman's physicals, and, uh, we haven't always used it, but, um, hopefully this year they'll, they'll get them done. We have nothing in there professional services. Um, under general supplies, we put five thousand dollars for fire hose, because we're constantly, fire department burns fire hose, some of it fails in tests, uh, we, we have to replace fire hose every year. I put in for a copier, because our copy machine is approximately, if I was to guess, fifteen years old, um, and still working, but I don't know how much longer. The last time they worked on it, they said, uh, next time they're gonna have to have some major work done to it and don't even know if they get the parts for it. Chris wanted to put in for a flagpole at station, station number four, because we have no flagpole, for two thousand dollars. Firefighting gear, we must buy gear every year. The gear has a shelf life, gets burned, it gets cut, uh, we, we put that in just about every year. And then, um, other miscellaneous supplies, just stuff that we don't know that we're gonna, that's gonna happen, that we, that we end up needing, uh, just the unknowns. Annual fire extinguisher service, forty-five hundred dollars, that's, that's a NFPA standard, they have to be done, that's, we do every department in the city, that's just the fire department's portion. Uh, fire department obviously has a lot of fire extinguishers, it's required by NFPA for us to have specific fires, fire extinguishers on specific trucks. The next one's a big one, it's twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars for the, uh, replace six roll-up doors at station number two. The doors in station number two are the second oldest, uh, it's the second oldest station we have. Uh, the sto, doors in station one were replaced approximately, um, seven years ago, and we're starting to have a lot of problems with doors, so we're hoping that maybe we can replace the doors, um, in two thousand eighteen at station two, and then, then hopefully, uh, within the next year or two, do station three. And that's, that's gonna be for a total of six doors.
The radio dues, uh, are, that's the county maintenance agreement that, uh, we have for the seven hundred system, and that's about nine thousand dollars, that's an annual dues.
Down on equipment, vehicle repair, we put in there a T-box for nine eleven, that's a part on the truck that Tim could probably explain what it is. I don't know exactly what it's for, but we have the brother and sister nine eleven, nine twenty-one, the old nineteen ninety...
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine E-one hushes. Um, last year we had to have nine twenty-one done, this is the exact same...
Missed a page, by the way.
I missed a page, I missed a back page. Let me just finish that and I'll go back to the other page. Uh, this is the exact same part that was replaced on nine twenty-one, and I'm sorry, I keep forgetting, it's printed on the back. Back to repair concrete in front of station two, uh, the concrete in front of station two, it got, we got a void up underneath it back when, uh, Greg Burrows was working here, and they did a repair on it, and, uh, it, the void came right back. So we had Public Works out there to look at it, and he, he approximated, he gave me an approximate estimate of nine hundred and five, well, he gave me exact estimate based on today's dollar amount of nine hundred and five dollars for repairing it again. And that's fixing some of the, some of the surface, um, uh, the surface underneath and hopefully it won't go back again. Asphalt, asphalt, the parking lot at station number two, approximately nine thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, the parking lot at station two has been rocked since, since the day we built it, um, and it's time, it really needs to be asphalted in. It's, it's looking real bad and it's, it's about time that we do that. Um, and we have a lot of training out there, a lot of people park out there, and it's just, it's just not working out real well on that rock. Uh, we've got some doors that are going bad, front door of station one, I mean, these are just minor things, but nonetheless, I put them in here because they're a thousand dollars. Front door at station two, uh, landscaping station at the airport is looking really bad. For those of you that go in and out of the airport, I don't know if you've noticed, but the landscaping out there looks pretty bad. I think that we, if we spend a thousand dollars, we can make it look real nice. And, you know, that's an entrance way to our city, a lot of people fly in there, a lot of, so, so we need to make it look nice. We have another parking lot out in front of the classroom we built back in, back about six years ago, it, uh, I'm sorry, back up. This is station four. When we had the building built, they didn't put enough rock in. So this is, uh, this amount should cover two loads of rock to, to cover what we need. We're showing, we see dirt and it's, it's not even totally covered, you can see dirt and everything else. Um, the wood at station number, number three, it needs sand and refinish, it's original, it's wore out and it looks real bad. Um, it's about time we do some, something with that. As you know, all of our stations, with the exception of station four, are aging, and we're just trying to keep up with things so they stay nice and look nice for the city of Faroe. Um, another side door at station number one, we have that's rusted out, can't be fixed, need to replace it. Station four, when we built the station, we never put a work cabinet in there for the guys to work on. We need to go ahead and put in a work cabinet. Um, and by the way, all these are, all these are pretty good estimates, I got these, I didn't make these numbers up, I, I actually called and got estimates from people. So this would be a cabinet, there'd be a workstation with a sink, uh, three-door cabinet, um, and, and station four will be complete with everything it needs. Station one, the kitchen tile is original, it's in bad shape, it's chipping, we can't even keep it clean anymore. Um, it, it's, it's pretty much the best word for it, nasty, it needs to be replaced. Um, and, and looking at about fifteen hundred for that. Floor grinding at station two, we've had, over the years, we've done the, um, we have painted the floors at all the stations ourselves, my, myself and the maintenance guys. We've got a total of about, excuse me, four layers of paint on the station floors, and it got to the point where the paint's just not adhering anymore, and we, we need to grind it down to concrete. We were going to take on this project ourselves last year, and after we dug into and found out what was involved in it, it was just not even realistic for us to do that, because it was so time-consuming, so much work. So what we did was we hired a contractor to grind the floors down, we bought the paint for two stations, we completed station one this year, um, it turned out beautiful, uh, we have the paint for station two, we just need a subcontract out the floors to have them ground down next year. Um, and they're, they're saying the, they're guaranteeing me ten, twenty years on these floors if done right. So we followed them, we followed the directions to a T and actually got the, the humidifiers in there, and so, so we're looking at ten to twenty years as compared to painting them every three years, which, which were about what we were doing, three to four years. Um, I'm sorry, station four, I said it was totally done, does not have a hose rack. We need to build a hose rack, all our hoses laying all over the floor out there, so we just need to build a hose rack, probably wouldn't even be a thousand dollars, but that's an approximate amount. And then I put in ten thousand dollar miscellaneous maintenance, maintenance per station, based on stuff that we don't know, uh, that may come up.
And then the, uh, radio maintenance and upgrade contract, that's actually being looked at, uh, that was the MOU that the, um, you guys authorized the mayor to sign. I had to do some research on it, um, and the county's redoing it, but that's what it would cost if we had, if we had to incur that cost, it's nineteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars for the RF site and the equipment down at the warehouse.
All right, back to five oh four four oh, uh, equipment, vehicle repair. The T-box for nine eleven, what I was saying was, it, they're nineteen eighty-nine, the E-one hushes, the oldest trucks we have, um, back last year, or two years ago, I'm sorry, we had a T-box replaced on nine eleven. We are assuming that that's going to be need done again. We did decide to, uh, put it off this year, but we're probably, for preventive maintenance reasons, gonna go ahead and do it next year, per Tim's recommendation. Nine eleven also, um, needs an air compressor, the one on nine twenty-one, that was replaced last year. We're putting it off again this year and putting it back in for next year, and we're probably just gonna go ahead and do it, because it's just a matter of time before it go bad. One air cylinder, our air cylinders, our SCB air cylinders that we breathe out of have, have a shelf life of ten years. At the ten, at the end of ten years, they have to be condemned. We have one of those going out of date and they're, they're five thousand, or I'm sorry, they're, um, they're six thousand dollars each per this year's price. That could go up, give or take a few hundred dollars. Our tires on our fire trucks, per NFPA standards, all firefighting vehicles shall not have tires any older than seven years old, so we have a rec, we have records, we keep track of that. We have six tires next year that'll be, that'll be seven years old and need replacement. Our annual generator service, that's just a, just a normal, normal annual service thing. Rescue tool service, um, our rescue tools, per manufacturer specs, have to be serviced every year by the manufacturer to maintain a lifetime warranty on them, and we've been doing that forever. Annual truck inspections, this is a, is a NFPA required inspection, they inspect everything from front to back of the truck, pumps, just every, they inspect everything. We do this every single year and been doing it for, forever. Batteries, we do, we do a battered, battery change out every two years on all the trucks, regardless of need, for obvious reasons, we don't wanna have to pull in the station, have a battery go out, and so we, we come up with a standard many years ago of every two years. Uh, we have, um, seven hundred dollars worth of batteries that are gonna need to be replaced the, next year. We did the majority of them this year. And annual truck servicing, that's obvious, it's just the annual truck servicing, oil changes, filters, all that good stuff that Tim does in-house for us. Uh, two hundred, um, item number two hundred, a line, ladder in two hundred, update eleven SCBs, we have the original back in, uh, I don't know the exact year, but they came up with a new NFPA standard, and we upgraded in the city of Faroe to the new air packs. These new air packs that we upgraded to are now old air packs.
They're fifteen years old.
Thank you, they're fifteen years old. Well, when we upgraded, we are at a point now where we either have to buy new ones or we can do this upgrade for these fifteen. We can do this upgrade for all, or these eleven, all eleven of them for seven thousand dollars. A new one's approximately twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. So this is a, this is a really good, good deal for us. And sun, sunbelt fire apparatus, which is the MSA sole source, have, has actually come up with this, this opportunity for us. This is not something they would normally do, but they have the spare equipment, um, or parts, and they're gonna be able to do this for us and save the city a tremendous amount of money. Annual flow testing, all per NFPA standards and safety reasons, all the air packs, SCBs, breathing apparatus that the city, that the fire department has have to be flow tested every single year, per standards of, and for safety reasons. Ladder testing is also an NFPA standard, uh, it must be done for safety reasons and also for ISO and NFPA. We have, uh, we've been slowly but surely updating all our lights on our vehicles. We've replaced, uh, most all the light bars as they started to go down with, with, um, LED lights. We have some rotators on the back of an engine nine thirty-one, ladder nine eighteen, excuse me, that need to be replaced, uh, with, with LEDs for approximately thirty-five hundred dollars. And the big one is a miss unknown repairs, seventy thousand dollars, and the reason is we have a lot of old trucks and we have a lot of breakdowns. And when they break down, anything that has fire, EMS or police on it, it's very expensive. Uh, two years back, we didn't put quite enough in there and we went way over budget. Uh, we're looking good for this year, and, and I think if we, we, we put that number in there, I think we'll be okay next year. But again, you can't, can't foresee what's gonna go wrong with fire trucks from one day to next. Uniforms, we put in a thousand last year for uniforms, uh, we'll get these uniforms if they're, if, 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 if the employees need them. We replaced them all just recently, they may not even need them next year, uh, but this past year, a thousand dollars wasn't quite enough, so we put twelve hundred. Uh, these guys get into some pretty nasty stuff, they go on fire calls, and sometimes their, their uniforms get wore out real bad, and we like them to look good.
That's my turn, all right. Um, we, uh...
Just missed seven hundred and nineteen thousand.
No, that's not it. Um, we're looking at, we'd like to request, uh, to replace our current nine fifteen truck. Um, it's, the truck's twenty-four years old and it's underpowered. The box on it, uh, is loaded with equipment and there's very little room for expansion, uh, if we needed to get something else. So we'd like to put a bigger box on this truck, um, and a bigger box will allow us to not just serve our current needs, but, uh, serve future needs for the city and the fire department. We'd also like to re-chassis the current rescue truck, it's a good truck, um, but we, in an effort to, uh, save some money for the city, we'd, we'd like to re-chassis it, put the box that's currently there on this new chassis and move it to the, uh, station four up on the north end to better serve that area. Um, and then if the truck were to be approved, we ask for eighty thousand dollars for miscellaneous equipment and, uh, radios, things like that.
We have a generator at station number three that was, um, uh, rebuilt many years ago, it's an old military generator. We would hope to replace that with an up-to-date, uh, generator, and, and it's very possible this old military generator can be passed on to our electric department to be used as a portable emergency generator somewhere else around the city and, and get us with a regular generator out there. So, so we put in, um, uh, fifty-five thousand for that.
Where would you want that, John?
At station number, station number three at the airport.
I was gonna ask you that question earlier, you said airport earlier, and then you also had station three, and I was confused.
Station three and airport, same one, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Man, I was sitting here racking my brain.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I didn't wanna embarrass myself, and I'm just, where is that third station?
I just assume everyone knows, I do that all the time, when I, I send people out to do work, they say, well, where's so-and-so, I just assume they know, I have to tell everyone all the time, so I'm used to it. Then I put on to replace nine ninety-four with a full-size truck, I have one of those old Chevy Colorados, and, and I would like to see that, that, that pass down to someone in the city that needs a smaller truck, because, uh, from time to time, quite often, I need a bigger truck and I just don't have it. Um, and I'm not asking for a brand-new truck, I'd like to see us buy another one from the state, one of the old used trucks.
And then the last one, Chris. Um, the rescue tools on nine fifteen, uh, are about twenty-two years old, the extrication tools. Um, they aren't, the current sent, uh, is, wasn't, is not designed to, uh, cut the reinforced metals that are in today's vehicles. And we'd just like to upgrade, upgrade those tools to, to be able to extricate on, on current vehicles.
Those tools are so old, I proposed them to Mayor Nix to get them approved, and we bid them out, if that tells you anything, how old they are.
Counsel, questions? No questions?
And just about every number on there, I've called and got quotes from someone in the business, so they're just not off the top of my head, those numbers.
Okay. All right, no questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, grants discussion? Eastern Shore Metropolitan Organization, uh, Sherri Lee, is this you?
It is, I'm here tomorrow, Sarah.
Oh, okay, I didn't even see you there. I didn't even see you there.
We all still good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, we're only gonna talk a few numbers. So, we, there are two grants available. And Jack, you know some of this from being on the board with NPO2 for the city. And I've been talking with Sarah and Taylor, who's with us, from BRAT, who came out to just answer any questions you might have. But one of the grants is for a BRAT pickup point. We are looking at applying for $250,000. And Sarah can talk a little bit more about what fund that comes from and what the city's obligation would be. We've been bouncing around some ideas. We talked about, I brought this before you, a couple of weeks ago, just talking about putting another pickup point in. A, because we need a pickup point. And B, because we can apply for funding to help complete our complete streets anywhere within a mile of walking distance and two miles of bike-riding distance from a pickup point. So...
Half a mile and three mile.
Half a mile and three mile. Okay, thank you. I keep saying a mile. So, yeah, and there is funding available for that, too, so it will help us. I've been working with David Powell and with the planning department and with Sarah on mapping out where our gaps are in connecting our paths so we can complete those, complete streets. And we have a little way to go on that, but this is one of those steps. It's also because, obviously, we want to encourage people to commute and use BRATs. So, providing a pickup point, another pickup point that's in Fairhope downtown area preferably is desired and it's something I know y'all have talked about in the past. But the other part to that is, there's another grant available for $100,000 that we're looking at applying for some likely electric-type shuttle vehicles. And we have a lot to discuss around that. We do have a business owner and operator downtown that's doing carts by the bay. We don't want to hurt anyone that's running their own business. So, we have a lot of things to look into, so this is an exploratory conversation. I will say that the pickup point will not impede access to any local businesses or anything like that or increase traffic. I know the museum had been thrown out as a potential spot, but I know, Jack, you and I had a conversation and we talked about the Dan Burden study and that they had recommended going near the parking garage. So, there's actually a great spot there and I brought you all maps of where that is. We actually met out there today and looked at that, so let me pass those around.
I want to go ahead and just ask the question of Sarah. So, we had, we had, Sherri Lee and I had discussed this a couple of weeks ago and I know that at one time it was talked about maybe putting a pickup location at the museum. And I personally, it's my own opinion, I feel like that that's already crowded. I think that we're already short on parking spots there. And I think that museum visitors should be able to park there and people that are going to those businesses in that part of the city. Because we have a parking garage that I think has been well-established. It is underutilized. It does, except for very busy times, have a lot of vacancy in it. And so, it would make sense to have people park in an underutilized parking garage. So, the question is this. Can we use these grants money, this grants money to, as we're making this a pickup spot, enhance that property? Because the Dan Burden study said it'll be better utilized if we enhance it, make it more lit, make it more inviting to people, make it less scary?
Yes, sir.
Make it more user-friendly?
And those funds can be used for that, for landscaping, lighting, aesthetics purposes, signage, weight finding. So, those can, those funds can be used for that.
As much as we like the broken asphalt and the trashcans exposed back there in the darkness...
You were mentioning parking. This is, this would be a drop-off point, not parking, correct?
People can park in the parking garage and then get on the BRATs bus.
Oh, got it. Did you get it? Yeah.
More likely would be dropping off there.
Got it.
Yeah, and Wayne met us out there today to look at some things, too. So, we had some, like I said, preliminary discussions about what would be impacted by this.
Okay.
I parked on that top floor of the parking deck on July 3rd. Fairhope was completely packed and there were three cars there.
Exactly.
I mean, you couldn't hardly walk around town, but nobody was on, in the parking deck.
Exactly.
And that's, you know, signage, accessibility, all that, you know.
We wanted it hidden. They did a good job.
Right, they did.
Okay.
One point I would like to make would be, from a logistical standpoint, that probably needs to be a one-way through there, off the section. It's kind of crowded down that alley, so I would recommend for a bus to be coming through there, drop off, there would need to be a one-way.
I think it already is.
I think it might be. I don't know if it's being used one-way. Is it really not one-way?
People are using it as two-way and it's got two arrows.
It does.
But it's really tight and it's...
You have delivery trucks coming in the opposite direction and it's plain with the buses will be coming down.
I really think that we can utilize that much, much better. And there was a talk of an access coming off of Magnolia as well.
That's right.
If we could, you know, if we can do that, we can make it a lot, a lot better as well.
Definitely.
So, if you, I think the natural tendency is, if you come out of that parking garage on the Hampton Inn side, you probably want to go straight to Section Street, but you'll have to route the traffic. And the other problem that we have there, and this is your point on signage, and a lot of this is just signage issues, is that people will pull into that first floor and they see all the Hampton Inn signs there and they immediately think, "Oh, I can't park here." And we just need some instructional signs that say, "Please proceed to public parking", you know, something. Because people just immediately assume they can't park there.
Right, right. And we can work on all that. That's part of...
Even if it's a simple sign, you know, "Public parking on second, third levels" or something.
Right.
Simple.
That's right. And I met with our ACE representative on Thursday or Friday of last week and that's one of the things we talked about is weight finding throughout the downtown area, but also, you know, parking garage, all of that accessibility.
And you're working on all of that right now?
Yes.
And the weight finding, there's the phrase.
Yes, you're gonna hear about that. That's on the agenda today, too.
So, what's the cost to pursue the grants and what would be our commitment if we were fortunate enough to be, receive, recipient of said grants?
Okay, for the capital project, the stop, the match is 80, 20, 20% local match. And I believe that has already been worked into your budget for this next year. So, that is included. The electric vehicles, that would be an 85, 15% match.
And, you know, as we're...
$250,000 is already on the, still, state transportation improvement project. And I believe that resolution from the City of Fairhope was up to 60, 250.
And I believe there's 60 in the budget. And so, basically, once you all decide on a location or have a, you just submit that to us and basically, the money is yours. We've already worked it into the state transportation program previously.
Yeah, I'd like to get some feedback from council, some direction. You got another idea in mind?
I think the parking deck's the place to put it.
And it kind of kills two birds with one stone, really.
Maybe the Magnolia Church area on that side of it. But yeah, I'd agree, it kind of kills two birds with one stone. It's centrally located, but it's also, it's a good spot for people to park.
There's a city-owned piece, I'm sorry, Jimmy, were you finished?
Yes, right.
Okay. There's a city-owned piece to the right of Old Bay Steamer. If you look over there, it's landscaped right now, but it's a pretty large parcel. We were out there today looking at it and it's actually perfect. And it's, was the only cool spot in the parking area because of that beautiful oak tree. So, it would be a great, a great spot. And it would also, I don't, I'm not quite sure how this worked out, but to, for someone to design something kind of neat for that, because it is highly visible downtown, would be another really good opportunity for us.
That's a lot more city property than I realized.
I have one other question regarding the facility, Mayor. Were you thinking about restrooms being located in that facility as well to go along with the waiting area? Is that correct?
Don't know yet. Yeah, it would be great. Could it be something, could that be something worked into the garage as well or would it have to be with the stop?
Be better off just to go ahead and do a little hub, a little shelter there, you know, with a waiting area and restroom on each end and then a little covered canopy out front.
In this day and age, do you need two restrooms? Can you do one that's handicap and unisex? I mean, really, is it, just gonna be nobody in there most of the time?
You got to have a male and a female, a family bathroom.
You have to have three?
All three?
We did at Soccer Field.
Can they be small?
One has to be, one has to be accessible.
Women, same family.
Right. Well, we do have a, we have a good piece of property.
Eric, shake his head, yeah.
Typically, you have to have a male and a female. If you have a small enough space, you can do what they call a family assist room, which is a unisex ADA bathroom. But typically, if you provide a male, you can provide a female, too.
Okay.
And we can look into that.
We will look into it.
Some different options, yeah.
Well, the, yeah. And this is, you know, those are all things a grant would cover.
Right.
Someone to design that.
Yes, that's correct.
And generally, gun.
And envision benches and covered seating there. You know, we have a lot more space than I realized with city property.
How utilized is that BRAT station out Fairhope Avenue?
We're sorry, we really have already outgrown that facility, to be honest.
That's good to hear.
And Sarah's gonna check on, sorry, Sarah was gonna check on us doing some outreach materials if we, you know, got this stop there downtown to really educate the public about using the BRAT service and...
We have the three bailing routes that depart there each day. Plus, you have several educational routes that students get on the buses to go to UMS or St. Paul's or whatever. So, you have all of that being utilized there.
Well, if we were successful in driving that much additional traffic to the parking deck, we'd need to do something to police or protect the spaces allocated to Hampton Inn so that they're not putting their customers at a disservice.
I don't know if they give them parking passes to put on their mirrors or not.
Well, they have, I think they actually have assigned spaces in there.
They do, but you don't know if they're a guest unless they have the ticket on them.
That's a good point. So, we would work with them as well.
Yeah, I think that'd be, that'd be pretty easy to solve. A sheet of paper in the dash would probably suffice.
Presently, we have, I believe, nine buses at Fairhope.
What could you see that expanding to? Could you see another six to eight, quickly, five, six?
Well, the biggest issue we're having right now is with the parking places for the riders. You know, we're pretty maxed out on the parking places with cars and trucks getting on the bus.
Do you have any reservations about the parking deck downtown?
I don't. I could see it working at the museum, if you had the circular with the tran...
Oh, I think it'd be, that'd be the most popular, but I just think it's causing an issue there and that we don't want to create.
My biggest concern at the parking deck was real tight in there as well, but if we make it a one-way, I could look for that.
I'm gonna go ahead and say this, I've thought about this for a long time. I park in there weekly. I mean, I park in there several times a week because it's the quickest place to park. You pull in, you find a spot. But it is, it's difficult. It's difficult to get in and out. It's, I think I'm gonna back into a car. It's tight. And even if we lost a few spots in there, I really hate to lose parking, but gosh, if we just gave up maybe a few, it'd be a lot easier. And I don't know if it's, maybe you want to go diagonal or make the spots, but it's intimidating and I can see some people maybe not wanting to go in there because it's literally intimidating to park in there. And that's part of the reason it might be underutilized.
Right. And so, we should look at that, too, obviously. We want people to have a good experience, so they want to come.
Yeah, I mean, I drive a truck and if there's a truck behind me and they have a trailer hitch, I mean, it's, I mean, it's 12 maneuvers to get out.
Which is highly probable here.
I'm a great driver.
It would be good to incentivize somehow. And there's some ideas for that.
Absolutely.
Incentivize parking in there for the people who work downtown.
Right.
That'd be good.
Definitely.
Did we miss something?
Are we getting...
Oh, yeah.
We're not even at council meeting yet. This is not a good time. So, I think it sounds like a great opportunity. Sarah and Taylor have been great about meeting, you know, with me and working this through for the last couple months that we've been talking about it, so...
Well, I haven't heard any pushback on the location, so...
I think that's a good spot. I think, you know, any type of advertising, anything else we get for that parking garage, I like.
And we don't even have to decide the location today. It's just a matter of, I think Sarah's already, could you prepare something or an ordinance in you, or a resolution, rather? Yeah, she'd already prepared something just to let us go forward to pursue the funding. And that's kind of where we are, you know, for, if we wanted to...
Do you have a resolution prepared?
I have one for, yes.
Okay. Do we need to get it on tonight or do you want to wait two weeks? I mean, two weeks, does it matter or do we want to do it now?
It doesn't, I mean, we can.
I mean, this is something if we're all in agreement on, we can push it.
It's ready, if y'all are, I mean, if there's no issue, if anyone, does anyone have any reservations about us going for the money?
I have a motion from y'all, that's really all I need.
Okay, so we can...
The original resolution stated what?
That was for the match, for the 60,000.
Right.
It was for transit.
This will specify.
So, what needs to be modified, then?
The location, mainly.
Location, okay.
So, that we can move forward with the paperwork to ALDOT and the NEPA.
Ah, yes.
Mr. Nguyen, can you draft a, one paragraph resolution that says we select the downtown parking garage as a location to use the transit money, something? Get with Sarah and she'll give you that language.
How specific do we have to be? Okay. Perfect.
Because we've already appropriated the money, I believe.
Right.
Okay.
Good. So, and the other, we don't, I just wanted to update you about the potential electric.
And I will be bringing the electric vehicles for the visionary list at our next NPO meeting just so we can get that on the list and start moving forward with that. So, it's still in the early stages, but...
And with our working waterfront discussions, that electric vehicle shuttle could solve a lot of issues even with whatever might or might not happen with the Marina and down by the pier and shuttling people around the city, so... But we have a lot of unanswered questions with that right now.
Have you got a hovercraft coming?
A hovercraft, yes. It's like the Jets in Fairhope.
It would also be nice if we could get a shelter and then if we could, you know, shelter with maybe a bench and people can sit on it and wait for the pickup or whatever.
Is that, that is a location that you're picking up right now or...
With the electric.
We go there ourselves, but if you had the little vehicles going, that may be a little drop off.
And we're talking like 14 passenger electric. They're not massive. They're actually pretty...
Kind of a smaller...
Yeah, and they're pretty neat-looking.
But that's pretty, that's pretty substantial.
It would help with traffic and a lot of the things we've been talking about.
Okay, excellent.
Within the city?
Yes.
Kind of moving, movement within.
Yeah, that's a little bit different than what, but I like it.
So, that was, that was all we had.
Okay, good.
No more questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Committee updates, council, if you have any committee updates, I'll ask you to give them during your council comments tonight. Do we have department head updates? If you have something that you really want to share with the council, we've got about five or six minutes. I'll ask you to come forward and give you, give us an update. Mr. Peterson, did you have something?
No.
Okay, I thought you were gonna get a... Mr. Dias, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay.
I have some things I'm gonna update because I wasn't sure if they're gonna have time, so I just have stuff that we talked about in our meeting, so...
So, no one in particular has anything they need to update the council on? Okay. Well, we'll go around the table real quick for committee updates if we have a few minutes.
Had no meetings since our last council meeting.
Okay. Council, Maboom?
Yeah, we got a harbor board meeting this Wednesday, July 12th at 4:30 at the library. I'd like to come by and stop by and check it out.
No updates from me.
I ask Joe McInerney to give us an airport authority update.
Thank you, Jack.
Glad to see you out there. You want to come up here so people can see? You want to come up here so people can see?
Yeah, we, our Phase Four, the Airport Improvement Project went, opened bids.
And I did not invite him, I just put him on the spot when I saw him out there.
That's good. Jack, thank you. Phase Four, the Airport Improvement Project went, we opened bids on Friday, we had three responsive bidders. We feel pretty comfortable that we'll, basically, there's five different aspects of the project. We think we'll get, it was, I think the all-in bid was about $3.4 million. I'm not sure the FAA will, you know, will reach that deep into it, but we'll certainly get, we feel fairly comfortable we'll get Phase Four done. So, that's a, that's a good thing. We'll come back to the council with a...
Phase Four is the finish?
Phase Four is to finish the east side, basically have the road hiding, nine inches of asphalt, and be, and be basically project-ready at that point in time.
I hate to open this can of worms, but there was, there was some discussion about the sewage collection there.
Yeah, part of Phase Four was, was the FAA had committed to do utilities so that we'd have a project ready to do. Electricity came in, like $65,000, pretty comfortable. The water was, I think, a $112,000. Again, these were three bids, I'm not, I don't have the allies in front of me. The sewage came in from, the sewage collection came in pretty significantly higher than we thought, between the $425,000 to $605,000, and that's for gravity-filled systems. So, we, we need to look for some value engineering opportunities for that.
Well, let me try to explain that to the council. There are, there are two kinds. There's wet well, and there's a pressure, pressurized system where, you know, grinder pumps. And it's been a recommendation from staff that we put in a wet well system. And initially, that's a very big cost to the airport authority. If you go with grinder pumps or pressurized system, the tenants, as they come in and they build it out, they have to pay for the pumps, and then, and then they bear the cost of it. And some of the arguments, and I'm going to kind of sound pro-airport, but I really want to hear the other side of this, too, is that if you allow the tenants to put in the grinder pumps, it's less initial cost, but also that this is not going to be built out for maybe 10 or 15 or 20 years. And so, you're building a wet well system, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars of an expense, and you won't be utilizing all that capacity for years and years and years, so...
10 to 15 years.
15 years. And there, and the gravity system certainly has a lot of merits to it. And, but the, the west side of the airport is all, is all pump systems, it's all grinder pumps, if I'm not mistaken. So, I guess, you know, I don't, I don't really want the council to try to get into the business of trying to dictate what kind of sewer collection systems are put in, but I really did want to think about it a little bit, because it's, it's a big burden on that development to put, on the east side, to put in that wet well system that may not be fully utilized for, you know, a decade and a half. So, Robert, you and I had that discussion, what am I, what am I leaving out? What are the points I'm leaving out?
You're not leaving anything out?
Okay, did I miss any of those points?
No, I mean, just the FAA is in the business of funding airport improvements.
Are they going to pay for the wet well, as it stands now?
Well, I mean, again, they're, they're going to go down and see how much money they have. Now, we, we could get lucky, I sense of it is they won't pay for $425,000 of sewage. You know, 20% of the project, they won't be sewage collection. I mean, that's, they want to build aviation-related, you know, aviation-related infrastructure.
Well, I guess one thing, Jack, is, you know, the, using the gravity feed versus the forced sewer, you know, the issue is not putting a burden on the, on the land or homeowner for the pumps, pump system, where it's gravity-fed, so there's no maintenance, you know, unless sewer line fails or something like that, but, you know, the pump would be just a cost of business, a cost of doing business.
But it's different maybe for a commercial, a customer as opposed to a residential customer, is that what you're saying?
Right.
You don't want to necessarily put that grinder pump...
Burden on the homeowner.
Cost of that system on the homeowner, if we, you know, if it's a subdivision, they all have to buy it. So, I think we've gone to trying to put in the gravity-fed system, right? But is that really the case for a commercial client?
I don't know.
Philosophically, is it? What other, what am I leaving? Mr. Peterson, feel free to join. What other, what other cons are there to the, will you come up, please? What are, what other arguments could be made against the grinder pumps system?
Well, I would make the argument both systems and try to put an onsite disposal system for that particular use of the property.
So, like a septic system?
Yes.
But then, that's the same thing as the wet well, you're not going to utilize all of it for years and years.
Oh, not necessarily. You can permit it so that you have alternate disposal sites available when you reach certain benchmarks for flow.
So, would you have a grinder system with it?
No, you'd have, you'd have a septic, each person would put a septic tank on the backside of their property and then pump the supernate from that into the disposal system. I think you're better off with that for this particular project, under any circumstance.
How do you, how do you build out the middle, as it's drawn out right now, with potentially lots of businesses surrounded by all of that asphalt, nine-inch-thick asphalt, and then have to run those lines?
It'd be the same location, it'd be the same location where the grinder pump would sit if it was a pressure system, or whether the cleanout and gravity line would be if it was a gravity system, and on the backside.
We do have plenty of land.
I just think it's not too many.
Is it going to be, yeah, and I appreciate, yeah, I mean, this is, we need to know all the options. What is, what happens if we try to build out that land in the future, but we can't do it because there's, it's on top of a, you know, field lines?
Yeah, you're not going to be able to build anything on top of this field line, that's, there's no doubt about that.
Right. It may take up a lot of prime real estate, I don't know. Anyway, all right, well, council, then you need to just give that a little thought, and I don't know how much we want to interject ourselves.
The backstory to all that is our specifications. You have a, have an economic valuation to compare gravity to low-pressure system. And that, of course, I think everybody has the application available to them, and we haven't seen the prices. And I tried to work with them on the design to minimize the cost of the gravity system, and I don't know how far that got, because it became a last-minute thing before the bid.
Right, I know it kind of, you know, came to go at the last minute.
And so, we're willing to work on either scenario, but what we do want to make sure we do is evaluate every option, and I think onsite is an option with the, with the entrance road being secluded from everything else. I think that the same force man you're going to run all the way out to 32 can run as far as you need to run it to get to the system for disposal.
We welcome a better way. I mean, we, we know what it's going to cost, but we just need to have these things, you know, ready to, ready to go when we're back to it.
Certainly. Okay. Anyway, well, just give us some consideration, I think. I think they're asking.
You're looking?
I'm a little confused as far as you're talking about, you're talking about like a standard septic tank with a field lines?
Yeah, but it would only be one disposal, it'd be one disposal field, and, but each site would have their septic tank, and the supernate would be pumped into the same disposal field.
So, one field, set of field lines?
Yeah, every, every location would have a septic tank with a, with a pump for the supernate.
Right.
And that way, the solids stay in the tank, and the liquids go to the disposal.